Welcome, everybody, to the Rite Town Park meeting, February 25th, 2021. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, wait, where am I?
You're already in the meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Hope.
Hello, dear supervisor.
Are we public?
Not yet. Well, we're public, but we're not streaming.
Hi, everyone.
I'm ready to transfer to the host.
Oh, look at, look at all of the guests tonight.
I know, isn't that nice?
That's so nice. Welcome, all of you.
Nice, fresh faces.
Are you trying to say help? My face isn't fresh?
Oh, no, you're sweet.
I resemble that remark.
No, I'm not. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. It's Dr. Tobin.
All right. Uh, are we ready? Let's see, Pam is here.
Trying to get on.
Tommy?
You're on time.
Uh, my thing, I got the spinning wheel down.
Where's Lindsay? Do we have a Lindsay?
Yeah.
No Lindsay.
Oh, she's calling in.
You guys can see me all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, because it's not, it's not expanding out. The box is expanding out for some reason.
You're in your orange room.
Yes. It's my music group. My new music group.
Who's the host? Naver, you host?
Well, she's about to be as soon as I find her name in the participants list. Ah, there she is. Okay.
Um, you know, you see the email I sent, I have to leave at 8:30.
I know, we'll try to get to the votes early on, which means I'm afraid that some of our visitors may have to wait a little bit.
Okay.
All right, we'll try, we'll try to.
I, I've got to go collect, you know, it's election day, I gotta go collect votes.
No need to explain.
No, I like, you know what? I like to be up front, reason why, things I gotta do.
No, that's, that's good. I unfortunately told Ray that I would not be able to collect tonight. I had a feeling that RTP was gonna run late.
Yeah, I, but I, I do it every election day for him, you know, and all the elections.
Yeah, I typically do too. I enjoy doing it.
All right.
Okay. Lindsay, is that you? They just dialed in.
Hello?
Yes, you're, you're, you're 707 blah, blah, blah.
436, yeah.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay.
Way to go.
Would you rename a council person? Yes. Jackson, please.
Lindsay, that's what. Send them. From the bottom.
Okay, we are streamed.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Rite Town Council meeting of March 16th, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the reading of the public. Which stands one nation, one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You know, one of these days, we're gonna really do it in unison. That hasn't happened yet.
One of these days, one of these days, we're gonna do a live.
Yeah, it's easier to do it in unison live.
That's right.
There's no video lag.
Oh, very true. Hope, please call the roll.
Really. Counselperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Counselperson Lindsay Jackson.
Here.
Counselperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Counselperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Yeah. First, we have a lot of women present tonight. Wish you all, I believe today is Women's History Month. Am I correct? I think so. And.
Yeah.
Uh, I wish you all the best. We have a lot of female leaders on this call tonight. And thank you all for being here and being who you are. Uh, first item will be adoption of minutes from February 16th. May I have a motion to accept a second to accept the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And a motion to approve the special meeting, you know, March 2nd. We have a motion and a second for that.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tonight, we have three public hearings. The first is a local law to create positions to all town justices for the town of Rye. Uh, may I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed. As most of the public knows by now, the Portchester Court will, uh, Portchester Village Court will be dissolving as of May 15th. And the town of Rye Justice Court will be expanding to take on the caseload of the Portchester Court. And for that, we have requested that two additional town justices be approved by the legislature, which they were. Uh, the governor signed the bill into law, I believe, last Thursday. Uh, and what this essentially does is it creates two new justice positions. For an interim period, May 15th to December 31st, the town council will appoint two justices. Uh, there will be an election in November. All town justices are normally elected justices, unlike village justices. And, uh, commencing with the, with January 1st, 2022, there will be two new elected justices. One justice will serve for a term of two years. One justice will serve the usual term of four years. And that will put the town on a schedule to elect two justices every odd year, just as we elect one justice every odd year currently. So that's what this local law does. Are there any comments from members of the council?
Just thanks to our legislators for helping us in this situation.
Yeah, they, they did a good, they did a great job because we were kind of stuck in a jam.
Yeah. Are there any comments from members of the public on Facebook?
None.
Okay, not hearing any. Just one additional comment to echo what, uh, I, two of our council people said. This was an extraordinary effort by Assemblyman Steve Otis and State Senator Shelley Mayer to get this through the meat grinder of legislative process. I received many calls, uh, trying to explain what we were attempting to do. This is not the usual process, uh, that occurs in the legislature, uh, for new judges. And, uh, we got exactly what we wanted, and I thank them. And the governor signed this bill, I believe, the day after it was passed by the, uh, by the Senate. It was passed by the Assembly first and then the Senate, and we thank the governor and his office for acting expeditiously. So, uh, if there's nothing further, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
None opposed. Um, at this point, I'd like to call for a vote, a motion to approve the local law. I'd like a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, without further discussion, then, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Really. Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaxi, Jackson.
Yeah.
We are two people. Do it again. Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yeah. Thank you, the local law is approved. Public hearing, uh, exempting town employees from town residency requirements. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make the motion.
I'll make. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
None opposed. This local law, let me, let me backtrack. This is a companion to the judge law, actually. In that, now that we're gonna have judges, we need to expand the number of employees. And, uh, under state law, every court employee is a public employee. Normally, you think of public employees as the elected officials or, or chief officers. Every, every court employee is a public employee. And therefore, is automatically required, as our judges are, to be a resident of the town of Rye. We are permitted rule to waive that requirement. We have in the past, for example, the previous administration waived that requirement for the town attorney. And we are suggesting waiving that requirement for certain offices in the court, mainly the town court, pardon me, the town clerk, clerks, and the, uh, town attendants. Does anybody have any question about this local law? Or have any further, any further questions or comment? From the council?
No, I'm good with it.
No, it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
This also, it, it enables us to broaden the, uh, the pool from which we can choose employees, and, uh, we know that, that there may be some employees that do reside outside the town that we wish to hire. So, um, are there any comments from members of the public on Facebook? None? All right, I just want to make one further comment.
No comments.
I, I know that in the, uh, local paper, the Westmore News, the, the notice of meaning, uh, characterizes as for judges, I called the Westmore News or emailed them to, uh, to let them know that that was incorrect. It's not for judges, it's for court clerks and attendants. So, uh, there may be a connection, a correction next week. Not necessary. Um, oh, we got it. Okay, um. Mr. Mecca, you're on the phone.
Yes. Trying to get on you.
John Mecca. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve local law number two, exempting certain town employees from the town residency requirement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yeah.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you, the law is approved. Local law number three, the town of Rye tree ordinance. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gotta be quick tonight.
Yes.
Public hearing, public hearing is open. I'm gonna let either Debbie or Pam, since this is sustainability, Pam, you could take it, or Debbie, you had a great input in, in, in working with this. What do you want to explain what this is about, please?
I defer to Counselperson Jaffe. And I also would say that, um, we have a, a member of our Sustainability Committee who's been driving this initiative with us this evening, and she may want to introduce it. Sylvie Bender.
So I'd love to actually cede the floor to Sylvie Bender, who has been absolutely at the heart of our movement, certified as a Tree City USA, as well as helping us gain other sustainable environmental certifications with the town that you'll be hearing more of. But Sylvie's been phenomenal, so please let us know what this is.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you, Debbie. Hi, everyone, I'm Sylvie Bender. I'm currently an undergraduate at Columbia. I'm also the town attorney's daughter. Um, I've been helping with, um, the Sustainability Committee for the past few months, um, like Pam said, becoming a Tree City USA. And, um, it's a certification that requires kind of an accounting of the town's initiatives surrounding tree care, tree maintenance, over the years, and it's something that will need to be recertified every single year. It's a great honor through the Arbor Day Foundation and the Department of Environmental Conservation of New York. Vic Federico and Sarah Suma helped a lot with kind of pulling together the application, but the passing of a tree ordinance would kind of put in, in stone, uh, the kind of systems that would allow for the, um, accounting of the tree care and tree maintenance on town property. Lots of practices that were already occurring. So just kind of putting it, um, in stone, uh, for this application, um, for the future.
Once again, giving a ton of credit to Sylvie because lo and behold, we were a tree city years and years and years ago, under her previous administration, and she did the deep dive and honestly, heads up and, you know, hands up to Vic and his crew because they have been doing the good work all along. And now, you know, are getting due credit for it. So, thank you.
Yes, I want to congratulate Vic especially for the work that he's doing. Pam, thank you for mentioning it. Vic is, uh, our Director of, of Grounds and Maintenance, and he and his people, his crew, Matthew and others, have done an incredible job at Crawford Park. It's, it was a really nice park years ago. It is a fantastic park today. Thank you, Vic. And I think that the town really deserves the, uh, the appellation of Tree City. So, uh, are there any comments, uh, from town people regarding this ordinance? Somebody's laughing in the background. Uh, the perils of the zoo.
Yeah.
May I? Are there any other comments from the council?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, any from the public? Hearing none. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And may I have a motion and a second to approve local law number three, the town of Rye tree ordinance?
So moved. I'll second.
You guys, you guys have to be a little bit quicker here. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, please call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yeah.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. And, um, before we, we have, we have a couple of proclamations. And while we're on sustainability, let's jump to 5.2 Arbor Day proclamation, which says here, presented by Sylvie Bender.
Excellent. Should I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay. Great. So this Arbor Day proclamation will, uh, recognize Arbor Day as a holiday for the town of Rye. Again, this is a part of the Tree City USA application. And will, you know, culminate also in a tree planting ceremony for Arbor Day. Something that, again, Vic was very on top of and, um, will do a wonderful job with this April. The content of the proclamation kind of, uh, goes through the history of Arbor Day and the significance of trees to the community, um, for environmental, uh, social, communal benefits. Not to mention, uh, for beautification reasons, trees are, uh, wonderful. So that's kind of the, the proclamation that I'm putting forth.
Thank you, this does not require a vote. Uh, we hereby proclaim April 30th as Arbor Day in the town of Rye, urging all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to safeguard our trees and woodlands.
And please stay tuned for news of the ceremony. Vic may want to talk a little bit about the tree that he'll be planting.
Before we, uh, I don't know if, who's, who's presenting the dance cameras? That's gonna be Sylvie too, or somebody else? No? Okay. So before Sylvie retires, I know she introduced herself as a member of the Sustainability Committee and the daughter of Jeff Bender, but I can't let this occasion go. Sylvie is one of our top fencers, fencing for Columbia University. She's going to be leaving for Doha at the end of the month to compete in an international tournament, if it's held with all the COVID going around. And there is some chance that if she's successful, she'll be on the US Olympic team. So, I just wanted to say congratulations and good luck. You're still young, if you don't make it this year, you, you got it in three years. So I just wanted everybody to know that, give you a, a shout out.
Congratulations, Sylvie.
Congratulations, best of luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, best of luck. Yeah. How exciting.
I've seen her fence, she's amazing.
Yeah, talk about women leading the future, good for you.
Ooh.
I remember when you were on Wondorama.
Humble beginnings, you had to start somewhere.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Sylvia, thank you for your excellent presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your work certifying us as a tree city and helping us get towards clean energy community as well. You've been absolutely invaluable to the town, and we really appreciate all the work you've done on our behalf.
I've, I've officially changed her middle name to the Lorax.
Oh.
You must be so proud, yeah.
That's a Dr. Seuss book that has not been banned, I believe.
Right. That one's still okay.
All right, uh, our next item is a proclamation. Uh, at our earlier Rite Town Park Commission, uh, we honored Mayor Falanca, as, uh, who is, as, as mayor of Portchester, as a member of the Park Commission. And Fritz is not at this particular meeting, but, uh, we are recognizing today as Fritz Falanca, they, as along with his wife Sandra. And I just want to say this, I said it earlier, and I just want to say it for the town record. I have known Fritz for a long time. He was the clerk of the village of Portchester when I was first elected to the Rybrook Board of Trustees in 1982. So I've known him for over 30 years. And, or almost 30 years, and have worked with him. And there is no finer public servant than, than Fritz Falanca. Not only is he mayor, he was clerk, he was, um, assistant village manager, he was village manager in, uh, all kinds of associations for clerks, for treasurers, finance association locally with the Kiwanis, with the Elks, et cetera, and the, uh, the Council of Community Services. Though, there's, has been no finer ser- servant of the public than Fritz. And as he retires, uh, next month from village service, I know he will continue, I just wanted to say that it's an honor to have worked with him and beside him. And so we, we make this proclamation on behalf of the town of Rye with, um, with great gratitude for his service to both the village of Portchester and the town of Rye. And with that, if anybody else would like to make a comment, um, please feel free to do so.
I, you know, I just wanted to say Fritz was wonderful to work with. He loved, he has such a passion for the village of Portchester and its residents. Um, and he's absolutely fantastic. He's not only a great colleague, but he's a great friend, and I wish him the best of luck as he moves on to the next chapter.
I've, I've known, I've known Fritz almost as far as back as I can remember. He was great friends with my dad and Sandy, you know, we know her because of the bank that she worked at. And, um, plus they're, you know, friends of the family. Great people, and I wish him all the best of luck.
Yeah, I'd agree, a true public servant, he's done so much good for so many people. Really devoted to, um, his constituents, his friends, his neighbors, and, uh, very grateful for all he's done.
I've only really known Fritz for the past year since taking office, but I am so impressed by the heart he gives his community. Not only just Portchester, but he also really does embrace all of the town of Rye. I've seen him, you know, meetings on Rite Town Park, and I've seen him come out in the community countless times. Want to thank him for everything he has done and wish him a wonderful, I think it's his third retirement attempt now, and hopefully actually does stay retired and enjoy it.
Thank you. And I know, Hope, do you know Fritz?
We grew up together. Right. I enjoyed a good friendship with him, and he's Mr. Portchester, as far as I'm concerned.
I went to grammar school with him, so I know him my whole entire life.
Wow.
He's a wonderful person. I scored.
You worked with him as well when you were mayor, and trust me.
Actually, I didn't work with him, yes, I did work with him a little bit when I was mayor, but after being mayor, um, and when Fritz retired, at one of his retirements, he was also on the scribe board with me as well. So we worked side by side, and I, I had the opportunity to speak to Fritz this weekend. I called him to basically, um, congratulate him on his next retirement and to also thank him for all that he has done. And what we, he was going down memory lane, not only the things that you'd mentioned, Gary, but also he did things like the Little League and the Pop League and at the state level. I did not know all of that. He is a true community servant.
Definitely.
And, and a gentle man and a gentleman. Well.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you. He was so involved in everything that he was involved with, he gave 150%.
Yes, he, yes, he did. And, and by the way, if you think he's retired, I, I'm not sure. So thank you, again, thank you, Fritz, and, um, we'll tell him. we'll tell him he can, he can view this on, you know, when, when the meeting's available to the public. I'm sure he'll enjoy hearing all the, the good things we said about him. Let's move on to the next. I know that Professor Tobin is waiting, but we have a couple of short items. I'm going to jump down to the end without objection. Dan Tartaglia is here. We have two tax resolutions. One on RoFred, which is six hundred six oh two and six oh sixteen Street. The other on Strobe Development, Midland Avenue and Willow Street in Portchester. So let me call those forward and hopefully we can dispose of those quickly with Dan's explanation. May I have a motion and a second to approve the cert on RoFred Realty and then Dan will discuss it?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Dan, tell us about this, because there's a big reduction on, on this one.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor. RoFred, which is six hundred King Street, was a little bit of a, a little bit of a confusing case. It was a single family home on an oversized lot on King Street. The house had fallen into disrepair and in fact it had developed a contaminated condition. So the owner, rather than try to rehabilitate the house, decided to knock the house down and subdivide the property. They knocked the house down, but there was so much asbestos in the house. It cost about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to remediate and remove and dispose of the asbestos by law. So the, the assessment that was being carried there, the, the way New York State law works, the Court of Appeals and Commerce Holding Company Corporation versus Town of Babylon basically says that you, you subtract the, subtract the remediation cost from the value of the house when you're arriving at an assessment determination. So the, the property was sold for eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we start with the eight thirty. We subtract the three eighteen. And what we did is we negotiated backwards, trending the numbers backwards in order to arrive at the, the settlement numbers. And there are some recent sales of the lots that also correspond to some of the settlement numbers. And all of the values for the sales of the lots have been brought forward and are fully reflected in the current assessment by the assessor.
Thank you. I have one question. The Portchester Village Board and the Portchester School Board are both aware of this?
Yes, they were aware of it. We've spoken with the treasurer in Portchester and also with the School District Superintendent Finance. And they're, they're aware of the settlement.
Okay, very good. Questions from the board? If not, Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jackson?
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
Still with us? And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes, thank you. The next one is the Strobe Development on Midland Avenue and Willow Street. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Make the motion. I'll second.
Hope, you can decide. Too close to call.
I thought I heard you first, Jill.
Okay.
That's good.
Dan, you want to play this, please?
Yes, this is the building that was originally a, an IDA project and finance building. It's an office building with parking underneath. It's on the corner of Grace Church Street and Midland Avenue. It has that kind of peculiarly red piece of artwork in the front that moves around in the wind. In any event, this, we, we got an appraisal on this because we were, we had quite a disagreement with the owners. They had a preliminary appraisal. We had a, we had an appraisal done by Steve Sherwood. And the settlement numbers, while they, they may seem large by way of a percentage reduction, are really consistent with our appraised numbers, which we were kind of, we were kind of stuck with. The, the original assessment numbers, both from the assessor's office as well as Tyler Technologies, were higher. This is one of those properties when Tyler did the revaluation, did not provide, Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe that they provided the requested income and expense information. So Tyler was forced to make certain guesses with regard to revenue and expenses in connection with the property.
And also with regard to condition, they had to make assumptions regarding the condition as well. Yeah.
All right. And again, the school district and the village are aware of these settlements?
Yes, we've, we've gone over them and we've done analysis of what the refunds would be.
I just, I just got a quick question. So they, they didn't do their income and expense report? So they had a guess at what it was and it wasn't until they found out that they were, that they felt it was high, then they finally came out with an, an, an income and expense report?
I don't think you're asking that. They did not furnish us with an income and expense.
Exactly, exactly. They didn't furnish with it. And then the, our assessor and Tyler, they had a guess of what their expenses were. And then, so then they didn't like it and then challenged it.
Well, they did provide, Tom, they did provide certain income and expense information. When they, when they file their note of issue, they have, they're required to file certain income and expense information.
Yes.
This was handled by William Sulzer's office in Bronxville. They're very, very good in terms of production of what they're supposed to produce. Unfortunately, it isn't comprehensive and it, and it, and it isn't, it isn't, what they didn't do, if I misspoke, Denise, you correct me, what they didn't do is respond when Tyler sent out the voluntary requests for income and expense information during a period of reval. Is that correct?
Yes, and also the, because of the condition, we, you know, we had to make certain assumptions.
All right.
I wouldn't say guesses. They're assumptions based upon information that they have from other properties.
From previous, from previous years.
Or from similar properties.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? If not, then Hope, please call the roll.
I don't hear anything.
Oh.
Oh. I lost power for like a split second. Okay.
I thought it was my end.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson?
Yeah.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. Thanks, everyone.
Okay. And now we'll bounce back. Dr. Tobin and his students, Tools for Change. Dr. Tobin, it's yours.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Thank you, Hope, for doing all the behind the scenes work to make this possible for us to join you tonight. We appreciate that. And we're very appreciative to be in front of the council again. As, as many of you know, you have, and Debbie as well knows, you have been supporting this program for, I think it's twelve or thirteen years or, or more. And so we're incredibly appreciative to be in front of you. What I want to do is, I want to introduce, I have three great students with me. I understand we're under a time constraint. We are not going to be long. But I have Madison Miriam, Julia Zarqour and Adolfo Acampo, who are going to present, present our brief overview of what we've been doing. But before we do that, maybe I'll just take a minute to introduce the program. The Tools for Change program has been attracting and serving students from the three high schools in the town for, as I said, twelve or thirteen years. We've had generous support from individuals in the town and in the county. We've had support obviously from the Town of Rye. We've had support from the League of Women Voters in Rye, Rybrook and Portchester. And I recognize some of you in the, in attendance tonight and we appreciate that. And we've had benefited from matching funds from the Westchester County Youth Bureau for the past years as well. And in the past, the students pick a, a topic or a challenge and then collect new data to get leverage on the challenge and then try to bring that data and analysis to bear on the challenge in the community. And this past year, we've been focused on understanding how COVID nineteen has reshaped our lives, altered the relationships in the town, with a special attention to how those things have impacted young people. Our research, which we want to share with you briefly tonight, suggests that the COVID nineteen crisis has both highlighted and deepened longstanding challenges, but also created new opportunities to strengthen our communities. And so tonight, we'd like to very briefly talk about the work we did last year during the height of the crisis. The, what we found in our research. And then we want to conclude again briefly by talking to you about what we are doing now, hopefully in the last period of the COVID crisis. And so Madison Miriam is going to begin by talking about what we did last year during the height of the crisis. Madison?
When the Tools for Change Research Program began in December of two thousand and nineteen, we focused on understanding how best to leverage the range of talents, perspectives, experiences and gifts that exist in our communities. Our working hypothesis was that unless we deliberate and pro, unless we were deliberate and proactive, people today would continue to stylo around income, race and ethnicity, religion, neighborhood and political belief, and thereby miss the opportunities to benefit from the diversity around them. And these missed opportunities would have negative consequences for our communities. We began our analysis by looking at ourselves. We felt that if we recognized, respected and fully leveraged the incredibly and unusually diverse perspectives that were present in our team, we could take what we learned to the communities around us. We began by learning how to observe and listen and we did some ethnographies of our own Thursday meetings. Then we had some difficult conversations within our group about what we found, which was how much self segregating was going on in our own group. Then we took what we learned beyond our team. We conversed with past research and existing perspectives. We read the essay, Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting in the Cafeteria Together? By Beverly Daniel Tatum. And then did some ethnographies of our own cafeteria seating in our three high schools, Portchester, Linebrook and Rhineck. We learned a lot about how age, gender and race shaped our friendships and interactions. We were getting ready to test what we had been learning in the broader community when COVID nineteen suddenly arrived in early March. COVID nineteen forced us to meet virtually as a team and it altered our research plan. We slowly came to think of the pandemic as an extremely unfortunate situation that might nevertheless tell us something important about how people in the community interacted and what community meant. We were wondering about two questions. Did quarantining at home and new social distancing rules create new silos and/or further isolate us around existing silos? And did the pandemic and our response spur the creation of innovative and novel new relationships and/or make us pessimistic about the future of our communities? In other words, like all good researchers, we learn lessons in humility and flexibility. The Tools for Change Research Team members use their newly developed ethnographic skills to document in detail how the COVID nineteen crisis was reshaping lives and how we and the people around us were responding. Then, with the assistance of Daniel Breakwood, we crafted an online survey to understand how COVID nineteen was impacting high school students and reshaping their broader relationships and the worlds they were familiar with. We administered the survey to students in the three high schools and the Town of Rye to the best of our ability during this difficult time. We got close to two hundred responses.
Thank you, Madison. Julia Zarqour is now going to pick up and talk briefly about what we found in our research.
Good evening, everyone. So the first finding is that more than seventy-five percent of our high school respondents believe that the essence of community was fellowship and relationships. Almost sixty-five percent of our high school respondents believe that the COVID nineteen pandemic made them more positive about their communities and the future of these communities. For example, they reported being more likely to recognize the strength of existing connections and the potential for good in their community. Additionally, more than sixty percent of students reported that COVID nineteen made them more eager to volunteer in their communities. Almost forty-five percent found that the COVID nineteen crisis led them to connect with people they would not typically come in contact with. And most students recognized and regretted that the pandemic made it harder to stay in touch with people who were vulnerable or in need. Furthermore, most high school respondents wanted to support other members of their communities through interpersonal and human contact, such as listening and providing advice. Many high school youth in the Town of Rye believe that the essence of community is to be found in a feeling of fellowship with others and, with others and common attitudes, interests and goals. These feelings and connections are precisely what the COVID nineteen pandemic has most altered. COVID nineteen has and continues to distance young people on many dimensions and made maintaining extended relationships in our communities much more challenging. We found that young people are experiencing the negative impact of COVID nineteen in especially profound ways. But the crisis has also prompted many high school students to recognize the importance of fellowship and relationships and made them more willing to volunteer, not only or primarily through food or clothing drives, traditional, which are traditional high school volunteer activities, but by safely connecting and building relationships with those in their community, even those they don't know. Most importantly, young people do not want to wait until life returns to normal, whenever that will be, to begin creating opportunities to connect and reconnect across our communities.
Thank you, Julia. And Adolfo is going to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing this year in two, two oh two one to return our analysis and our findings in a community project. Adolfo?
We're launching a podcast. It's called Remaining Bright Town, Reimagining Bright Town Together in Inspiring Friendships. It is to inspire and create momentum for effort to strengthen our communities. We, we're looking at organizations and groups that might be interested in, in listening to our podcast and discuss it. The series will feature two students who will have a conversation between, between two unlikely or inspiring friendships from all ages, from across our communities. The pairs will, will talk about their friendship, their work, and how they together bring their imagination to bear on the future. Together, we hope to make conversation become a resource we can draw on to connect and reconnect, to recognize the value of existing relationships, inspire us to begin new friendships and to remind ourselves we have much to offer to each other and our community. The months ahead, or this, we're contacting community members, school officials, local governments and businesses and nonprofit organizations to solid sit suggestions about repairs we shall interview. How to be an interesting and interest in the reimagining our community together series and how to leverage the energy to the series to start circles of conversation. You may have questions about what we just presented or comments. We, we have three questions for you. Will you be willing to listen to our podcast and discuss it? What are questions, what are organizations or groups will you recommend we reach out to, talk about this project? How else could we work together and assist your own efforts?
So that's our presentation, council members, and I, I know you're pressed for time, but we're happy to, to field questions or whatever way Supervisor Zuckerman, you want to, Zuckerman, you want to use the, the time this evening?
Well, I'd like to, first of all, I want to congratulate.
Well, I'd like to, first of all, I want to congratulate you, Dr. Tobin and your students. Was a great presentation, very interesting topic, very timely, of course. And I'd like to throw it open to the council members if you have questions. I would say we're certainly willing, myself and the council, to move forward with with anything that you would suggest, any information you need. Happy to cooperate in helping you further. Anybody else?
Very impressed with both the research and then the Forward Thinking Project of starting the podcast. And I'd like to know a little bit more about what you're planning on doing with the podcast and how you're going to reach out to people to invite them on the show and, you know, showcase these relationships.
So we have three different, we've kind of split into three groups, a marketing team, a production team and a communication team of sorts. And marketing, we're going to reach out to, we've created a list of organizations or groups that we're going to send the podcast to. And for the purpose of them to listen and maybe self reflect on themselves or others in the community and kind of just promote thought within them to see like, have you had any relationships that have changed over this time? And then we're going to, after we record the podcast and before we send it out, we're going to come up with a sheet of kind of hints of how people can communicate with others if they want to reach out, some little like prompters or ways to just.
What I'd like to know is, and I listened, I read the presentation, is what is the end product that you see coming out of this? A report, suggestions, what would you like to see come out of this in the end? When each of you graduate and go off to your colleges, what should be left here? What is the, what is going to remain? What is, what is going to be that which you hand down to the next generation of students that follow you? The kids that that are now in junior high school and maybe first to second year of high school?
For the community to get together, to have more unity among students, among the different groups in their communities.
What does unity mean?
Sorry?
What does unity mean? In other words, unity of thought, compassion? What are you trying to achieve in this community? We live in a divided society right now, as I'm sure you're all aware. What is it? I like the word unity, but I'm not sure how you're using it.
What I mean is, by creating, so we're looking at these friendships which are inspiring since they will be unlikely, they are surprising. So it's, as you said, it's from divided, we're in divided. So from those two sides, they brought, they met each other and a friendship came out of it, which is inspiring since that created ideas, created projects which made the community better. So it's to work better towards a more promising future.
I would say we want to promote open conversations. I don't think there's enough or there's never enough conversations that take place. I think the more open we are to hearing different thoughts and ideas of everyone in the community, the better we become at being empathetic and willing to discover different thoughts within the community.
I find it very interesting as far as, you know, I think the three of you are all seniors. Adolfo, I'm not sure about you, but I do know Madison and Julia are. This is good work that we're trying to do across the community, the town. We're looking into conversation and what we can do to foster inclusion. The school districts desperately need a bridge and students are a wonderful bridge. So to get students communicating across Rhineck, across Portchester, across Rhinebrook is good work and interconnection. So I'm wondering how you three may mentor the next generation of Tools for Change and perhaps Dr. Tobin can also carry on the good work with the next group of students in the organization to not only build those bridges, but to strengthen them and to make sure they remain after you all head on to, you know, your next four years.
I know that there's younger generation of students who are already involved in the Tools for Change program. I've been in it for four years. I know there's people who have been, who are sophomores now where it's their second year and they're developing those skills of of being able to participate in a program that combines and three school districts and three different like fields of thought, if we could call it that. And I think the more students or the more change we see, the better the students, I think the better the students will feel about the work that they're doing. I think when people are productive, that just motivates the younger generations because they see the progress that's been made. And I think Adolfo, Madison and I are kind of good examples of showing that things are possible to achieve. So I think just being role models will help continue this programming, continue the bridge between students and adults.
Well, I think.
I've been looking forward to having your class join us for months, particularly because the town has begun its own diversity and inclusion policy initiative led by Councilperson Jackson and Councilperson Jaffe. And I've really been looking forward to what can come out of a conversation between the town council and the Tools for Change program in terms of what we can learn and how we can help lead a community diversity and inclusion study of some kind.
I also, and I, you know, wanted your input. I find it very fascinating how sort of the juxtaposition of what you're studying, which is unity during the pandemic overall and especially in an academic setting where you see sort of disunity to the extent where students are in the classrooms different days and learning virtually and everyone's kind of branching out in that aspect. Have you seen any kind of, I would guess, negative impact on unity as a result or disjointedness? Or what are you observing as people kind of come back together?
I think the day-to-day conversations were lost at the beginning of the pandemic. I mean, just those small interactions, if you pass a student in the hall every single day going to like history class, that little connection, like once you add up how many of those you had each day, it had it up to part of your personal interactions with your peers. So as schools starting to be in person, more students are in physical school, those connections are building stronger and they're getting back to normal or. They're definitely. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I was going to say, but when you had smaller groups, did you see a lot of unity among students that wouldn't necessarily have had it among the larger population of students?
I think the of students, like, some, so at least at Rhinebrook, it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So the Monday, Tuesday cohort kind of came together and are closer in a sense, because you have a smaller population to interact with. So therefore you are going to interact with different people. I know across the grades, seniors are interacting more with freshmen. So it's kind of creating unity in that sense where conversations are being had that usually or typically wouldn't.
That would be interesting because the, you know, the concept or I guess the main idea you think is that the physical separation would cause more separation, but when you look at it and you have a smaller pool of people to learn with, it does kind of open that door to more interaction with those you wouldn't necessarily have interacted with in the past.
I would just add that I think we have an adult, our first friend, friendship pair that we're going to do with our first podcast is an adult pair. And we're hoping very, we're very much hoping to have a youth pair as well to get at some of the issues you guys are talking about. I think it'd be very illustrative and we're kind of brainstorming on possible candidates for that second podcast at this point.
I think it's a great, I think it's really good what you're doing. I'm really impressed with all of you, with the research, with your presentations, the thought that's gone into it. And, you know, it's something I'd like to see you continue. And I'm looking forward to the next stage. Professor Tobin, thank you so much. Very much appreciated. And all of you, three students, I think that you're all to be congratulated. You're obviously all very bright, very articulate and have studied quite well. And I think you're absorbing the lessons that you're studying. So thank you very much. And you can come back anytime. Debbie, you'll schedule them whenever, whenever appropriate.
It'll be my pleasure.
You're so nice. And Debbie, we are happy to do anything to work with you guys. So let's, you know, I know you have crazy busy, but let's set up a time to check in and figure out how we can coordinate any initiative you come up with. We want to work with you on. And we're delighted to have the opportunity.
I think it might be, you know, some kind of a brainstorming conversation with Councilpersons Jaffe and Jackson might be a lot of fun.
And I would be very happy to drag in the chairs of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee with the Rhinebrook Board of Ed and perhaps Dr. Tobin, you can get us contacts with Portchester and Rhineck and we can have a big brainstorming.
Would love that. You're so generous and kind. We appreciate very much your patience and allowing us to talk with you tonight. You're very, very good. Thank you.
We appreciate patients waiting through this meeting and through the end of the last one that was unfortunately gone too long. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Tobin.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. We have, before we get to Blink, I'd like to, while we're on the subject, let's, let's talk about Dan Scammer. We have a resolution. And regarding the Dan Scammer Energy Site. Pam, I think you should take the lead on this. What do you think?
Very happy to. I do want to make a note that I have an extremely ambitious sustainability committee. And I may be at the helm, but they are huge self-starters. And I could not even start to tell you how much I appreciate not only Debbie, who basically is there with me at the helm of this, perhaps more than me, but the subcommittees themselves. The Dan Scammer was helmed by our intern Hannah Adler, by James Ward of the City of Rye and by Carmen Santos, who actually also works with Sustainable Westchester. And they brought to us information months ago about the Dan Scammer power plant expansion. So that might be the one correction I might make to the reso is that it's not building, it's a massive expansion to this power plant that would bring in fracked gas. Now it's way up the Hudson and you wonder why does this affect us? But not only does this possibly affect the waters that come through the Hudson and into our sound and into the oceans. So as we are trying to be a clean energy and a clean environmental community, that certainly does affect the waters that are, you know, flow in and out of Rye, but also health aspects. And living with people who are severely asthmatic in my home, I do worry about what are the air pollution effects that would come from such a huge plant? We've had some great presentations. You heard from the committee earlier or the subcommittee last month. And last month as well, the county did pass a resolution against Dan Scammer. So we would like to echo that stance and say that here in the town of Rye, we stand behind the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act that was recently instated by Governor Cuomo, which does say that we're looking for zero emissions by 2050, 70% renewable energy by 2030 and a carbon-free electrical sector by 2040. You're going to be seeing more work by Debbie and the Environmental, you know, Sustainability Committee towards these goals over the next couple of years. And Blink that we'll be talking about is one of those items. But we would like to resolve or we'd like to ask the town council to resolve that we, the town of Rye, are an environmentally forward community and we stand against the expansion of the Dan Scammer Plant and the damages it could bring to our community and the fact that it will set us back in New York's drive towards clean and renewable energy.
Thank you, Pam. That was very well done. Much appreciated. Excellent. I have a motion in a second. Pam, why don't you make the motion?
May I please so move that we pass this resolution against the expansion of the Dan Scammer Plant?
Yes. Second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jill. If there's no further discussion, then Hope, please call the roll.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Councilperson Jackson?
Yeah.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes, with huge thanks.
Councilperson Nardi, I think he left, and Supervisors are coming.
Yes, absolutely. And I think that this one comment, when this, when this Dan Scammer thing first came across my desk, I said, what is it? Why should we be concerned? And then, you know, Pam got into it. We discussed it. It became what they call a big thing. So Pam and the committee took the lead and the result is this resolution. Pam, please thank all the rest of your committee for, for all of us. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Supervisor. I do publicly thank the committee. They are doing amazing work and I'm very proud. I'm very thankful to you for putting me as part of this committee.
You're very welcome. All right. Blink. In the blink of an eye.
We are, we are joined by Brandon Jacobs of Blink and also Seth Lightman of Sustainable Westchester. We were approached in, frankly, I think I attended a webinar presented by Sustainable Westchester with regard to electric charging stations in the fourth quarter of 2020. I expressed an interest in learning more. I received a proposal from Brandon at that time that I did not have the opportunity to dig into as we were in the middle of budget season. We took another look in the beginning of the year. And by that time, Blink had developed a hybrid operating model which provided me with not only information about the electric charging stations, but a proposal with very little to no downside and tremendous upside with regard to the, the work that we would have to put in to install electric charging stations at Crawford Park. In fact, Blink would do all the work and would take the, the financial burden and we would start day one with a surplus and, and then share with Blink on the revenue going forward. That, put together with how this supported the town's deeply felt policy of supporting sustainability is why they are here today.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me, let me just, let me just, before Brandon goes on. Uh we had this presentation at the Right Town Park Commission meeting earlier. And uh Betty had a substantial number of questions that we're going to have answered. So uh I'd like Brandon to make your presentation along with Seth. But I don't plan on taking a vote. I want to take a vote uh at the same time that we do for the commission when when all the questions are answered. So uh but I would like you to make the presentation, tell the council what this is all about and what we can expect. Okay?
Thank you so much to the uh for the opportunity to do this. Uh Sustainable Westchester was approached by Blink uh after we did a a vetting of a few knowing the technology over several years and also knowing of the Gen two or the updated technology that Blink has offered, which is basically the fastest charging station at a level two, which is like a lower-end charger, not the one that goes into a plug, but a two forty service, like a dryer, electric dryer plug. And it's giving more miles per charge in an hour than any other technology on the market. More importantly, it's more cost-effective than any other technology that we have seen come to market in the state. And it helps to provide a net rebate back to the municipality, which is more than we hear of any other technology. So we developed this program of an EV charging station program, but it started definitely with Blink. They have been one heck of a partner. We have so far seventy-four ports up to date um that are going to go live. And this level-two charger uh will definitely do the job. And they're, one of their other greater components is uh like what Debbie said, have being able to provide a business models and the negotiation to make it so it's a win-win for everybody. And at that point, I'm going to leave it to Brandon to uh go through the tech a little bit and then um but explain to you also really quickly, there are two programs. One is the Make Ready Program, which is the hardware, the installation, the the transformers, all that kind of stuff, creating a meter and all that. Blink under this program would cover that cost. And then there's the Charge New York Program, which is under NICERTA, which you get $4,000 per port back to you, even though, and Brandon can explain the net cost, but basically it's $750 back per port. We seem to be able to uh realize this is a new tech, but it is better than anything that's out there. It is already being installed and it is installed in various states. And uh we're very excited to be working and bringing Blink also to market. So it's not uh one company running the charging station market all over the state. So Brandon, I'll leave it to you with that. Thank you to the board for your time.
Thank you, Seth, and thank you to everybody for having me. Um it's good to speak with another group interested in in charging infrastructure. So as Seth mentioned, there is, you know, two main programs for um rebates for EV charging infrastructure. The state is on a mission to install fifty thousand chargers in the next three years. So you know, they are, they're pouring in a lot of money. Um the Make Ready Program alone, they invested $700 million in the state of New York to install these chargers. So the rebates we're seeing here in New York um dwarf any other rebate program we're seeing elsewhere in the country, um including California. So you know, it's really exciting time for New York and we're we're very honored that Sustainable Westchester has chosen us to um partner to expand EV charging network in the county. I I live in Westchester, so I'm I'm local. Uh I I did a a site visit at Crawford Park and the pier. Um I I walked the the sites and I scouted where the chargers would go and where we'd pull the power from and what the estimated costs were for that. So I'll run you through this Excel sheet that you have on your screen here. Uh we 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 priced out three different options, um three different quantities for Crawford Park and then just one quantity for the pier. For twenty chargers at Crawford Park, I believe, um Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to expand the parking area where like the grass currently is, return that into like a parking area and place a lot of the chargers there. Um is that right, Debbie?
Yeah, that that is correct. Um we have uh what we're thinking of is is the current overflow parking area that we're already using. Um and that's where we would put the chargers and use um uh ecoraster um uh tiles, as it were, permeable permeable pavement to uh create the parking stalls.
Yep, and there's a a transformer right there um next to those spots in the back where we'll pull power from. So it works out nicely that the power source is very centralized and that the electrical runs won't be too long. Um so I'll run you through the economics of what we're proposing. So for Crawford Park, if you look at the the row that says twenty chargers, um we, what we're doing is Blink is paying for the installation piece. So we're going to hire an electrician to, you know, pull the new service from the transformer, deal with Con Ed to to create that new service, run the electrical wires, mount the chargers, everything that goes into installing the chargers, Blink is paying for. The town is buying the chargers from Blink for just under $65,000. And you're receiving a rebate back from NICERTA, the State Energy Conservation Board of $80,000. You get that thirty days after you apply for this rebate. So you have an out-of-pocket expense of sixty-five K for thirty days. And after that, you get a check for $80,000. And that is the only out-of-pocket cost you'll have throughout the life of the chargers. So you're profiting fifteen grand on just the chargers themselves. And then the, it doesn't say it's optional here, but the two-year extended warranty that you see listed there, that is an optional cost, so you do not have to pay that, um only if you'd like. And if you do elect to pay that, each charger comes with a one-year warranty. This would be extending that two years to cover all parts and labor. Um if you do purchase that, then those, then the twelve thousand five nineteen is the net profit you would receive after all those expenses. And then below that is the the subsequent yearly revenue. So you know, these chargers are a a revenue generating asset. So whenever someone uses the charger, they're they're paying for the the kilowatt hours that they're using, just like like a gallons when you're filling up your gas tank, paying for the kilowatt hours. That's what that's what charges the 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 car. Um so depending on the usage of the chargers, these are the revenue projections based on our experience for, you know, the last five years or so. And because we're paying for the installation and you guys are paying for the hardware, we're splitting the cost. So we're also splitting the revenue fifty-fifty. So the the yearly revenue projections are are cut in half to show what your share would be on the low end, medium end, and high end. That is the the brief overview. I'm happy to dive into more details on the economics. I know I just went through a lot there. Um are there any immediate questions on that?
Well, let me ask, yeah, um Debbie, uh on on share screen, thank you. Um that's the basics of it. If if you're ready to vote, you know, if the council wants to take a vote on installing this, let me know. Otherwise, we could wait for the uh more information uh that uh Benny Salonicia is asking on the on the Park Commission. Uh more of a uh technical question. But I mean, to me, you know, it looks like it's looks like something that uh that we should do that fits into our sustainability plans and makes us some money at the same time. So um what do you think, Pam, Jill?
I am in favor. I am certainly in favor. I did have questions as far as um Brighton Beach being a pay lot. Brandon was great about answering those um talking about hybrid models. So I know those questions would come up. But I think this is the future. Gary, you drive a Tesla, so hopefully more of us will eventually get there as well. Um but I I just do think this is important for the town. Sorry. Unduly, I shouldn't have had there.
I I guess my question would be how it, I mean, I know it will fit in the overall theme for the new parking, et cetera, um which would be my main concern, so.
Say that again, Lindsay.
The overall parking and, you know, improvement, et cetera, so.
Well, this would expand it beyond the current parking lot. As Debbie said, into that that what we have is an overflow.
Which is constantly being used now because you you usership of our park has increased enormously. So this this actually feeds directly into a direction where we would be heading anyway. And creating additional additional parking in a sustainable way at Crawford.
That sounds great. It's green parking.
Green parking.
Jill?
I would agree. I'm comfortable voting. I mean, I don't have any other questions.
All right.
I have one question. Uh Brandon, is there an expiration date for the rebate program?
So for the Make Ready Rebate Program, it's, they just got funded. It's good for five years. For the NICERTA rebate, the one that you're receiving, the program started about a year and a half ago with seventeen million dollars, one seven, and it's down to about six million now. So it's a, it's a finite number that um when it's used up, it'll be done. So there's still a decent chunk left, but it is going to.
So, okay, that that rebate, that's on the um on the on the installation, correct? Not, it's not a rebate on the on on any fees. That's a rebate on the on the installation, on the the capital cost, correct?
Yep, they, it's a flat rebate of $4,000 per plug.
Okay. So um Jeff, do you have anything?
On the blink?
Have any comments, Mr. Attorney?
On on general comments or on this this proposal?
This proposal.
No. And and Gary is not the only only Tesla driver, by the way.
I'll get there. I'll get there.
Helby drives a Tesla, of course.
All right, let me, let me um Jeff, would you change the the last part of the resolution? Authorize the staff, authorize the su- the supervisor or town administrator?
You want me to change it now or after it's passed?
No. Well, assuming that it's changed, we'll pass it as
Modified.
I have a a motion and a second, please.
Jill, all you have.
I didn't know if you wanted to move, but so moved.
Who's going to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Hope, please call the roll.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Councilperson Jackson?
Yeah.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi? Oh, he left. And supervisors are coming.
Yes. Seth, congratulations, Brandon.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
As I said at the beginning, I didn't expect to take this vote, but good for you. Sometimes I get
Thank you, everybody. And then the the next step would be there's like a few-page agreement we would need signed. So should I should I coordinate with with you, Debbie? And we can go from there?
Yes, do do coordinate with me.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Nope.
That it? All right.
Thank you all.
Again.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Bye.
All right, um we have uh our reports. I think everybody wants to make them brief since it's almost nine fifteen. Uh Camille? Do you want to submit? Is your report submitted? Do you want to say anything? Camille?
I'm mute.
There we go. Um just that we are um extremely busy. It's all good since the governor increased the amount of guests people can have at the parties. We are really booking heavily. So um the past three months, we had forty-six events. And our revenue, rental revenue was nine thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the three months. And we have booked seventy more events. And the rental revenue from that is almost $40,000. So things are looking up at Crawford. We're very busy, but we're very happy.
All right, very good.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Camille. Um the uh Dave, you have anything? I know you submitted.
I submitted the the Seabulls Report.
Good.
Yes, it's uploaded.
Good. We're collecting more money, as you can see.
Yeah, we had two two more interim closings uh beginning of March.
I know.
At Dan Close, so.
Hopefully, we'll have one more next week.
Good.
Uh Nick, do you have anything?
All I want to do is remind everybody, if you have unpaid taxes, like we just sent out a hundred and ten notices to the Village of Wrightbrook folks, try and clean them up because in two weeks, you will be getting your new bill, be going into the twenty twenty-one tax season. So it's best to get rid of the twenty twenty and twenty-one taxes that are still hanging out there before you begin all over. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Hope, your report is submitted.
Submitted, right.
Anything else to add?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Um I have one one short thing. Before we adjourn, uh I I asked Hope to add a uh an executive session to discuss contract negotiations. It will only take five minutes. I just want to do that. Everybody else can go home. Um we will adjourn just Jeffrey, Debbie, and the council people. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
But wait. But wait, before we go, you didn't give me two seconds before we let the public go. April seventeenth, we're going to be posting a community cleanup, which is a community planting. So please keep an eye on the town website and sign up to plant across the entire town. And then April thirtieth at Crawford, Vic is planting a tree for Arbor Day. Information will go out about that. Please join us.
Thank you.
And with that, I third, let's do this.
Uh Cam, it, what about the uh demand uh program? The that's not ready?
Not ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Bring it up at some point.
Okay.
Two days' notice when it happens, but we'll
Okay. Everybody else can go home except for the council, Debbie and uh and Jeffrey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Why am I in detention?
You too.
No options. Is that what, is that what's sticking around with us is?